Well, good evening, everyone. It is 6:42 and we have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. I wanted to thank you all for being there this evening. I apologize I'm not able to be there. Last year Governor Abbott appointed me to the Texas School Safety Center Board of Directors. I am here in beautiful Corpus Christi, Texas, attending their yearly conference and their board meeting. And I just wanted to give a special thanks to Norma and David and Technology and all those who were involved in making this happen. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes for me to be there via Skype. So, I wanted to start off by saying thank you to that. And I was able to listen in on the budget meeting. I will forward any questions or clarifications necessary this week, but I thank you all for your commentary and all the information. So, to go ahead and get things started, first up our information items. Dr. Dupree, you want to take it from here?
Yes, sir. Our first item this evening relates to the internal audit update that our Chair of the Boards Audit Committee, Jim Rice, is going to give that update.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Thank you, Mr. Burdine. From the wonderful world of internal audit, I have a report. I promise to be brief, no matter how long it takes. We have, in 2006, the Texas Legislature placed the responsibility and the burden of internal audit on the Board of Trustees. At Fort Bend ISD, we have chosen to outsource that effort. And this is the fifth year of our current approach to internal audit, where we outsource that to Gibson Consulting. We have just recently issued a competitive procurement for this work to continue, and Gibson was awarded the contract for another five years. To date, we've conducted 11 audits and two follow-up audits since the program began. One program audit and one follow-up audit are currently underway. To date, out of these audits, 140 recommendations have been made and implemented by the administration because the primary goal of our internal audit function is continuous improvement. The Board Audit Committee each year is designated by the Board President, and they plan to work, oversee Gibson's work, and monitor the implementation of the recommendations. Currently, the members of the Audit Committee are Kristen Tasson, Jason Burdine, and Jim Rice. President Burdine will determine who will continue for this year and the near future. During the 2017-18 internal audit fiscal year, Gibson conducted the following audits for Fort Bend: Special Education, Technology, a Human Resources Follow-Up Audit, and we use Gibson to also do program management for us in guiding the Board Audit Committee through each of the audits and assist in managing the meetings. Last year, our budget for internal audit was $300,000,500. For this year, 2018-19, our budget is $275,000, so we have reduced that. This year, the internal audit program will focus on child nutrition, transportation, a follow-up on purchasing and accounts payable, and then program management. I do have a detailed report here, which I will present to the Board Secretary. And if any of you have any questions at this time, I'll be happy to answer them.
Grill?
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Sorry, I forgot where to look. I have a question for Mr. Rice about the technology audit that you guys completed this year, and maybe this is a question for the administration as well. I was wondering if we were considering doing security, technology security audit, and if we should, it didn't appear to be part of the technology audit we did this year, and if that's something we should consider in this upcoming year.
Mrs. James, I believe that the security audit for this year would be very unproductive because we have many efforts underway in terms of addressing several of the security needs that we have this summer as well as the school year. As I presented in the responses to the questions, we have included many of the, I mean, we're currently conducting many of the penetration tests and things like that that were asked by the Gibson audit. And also, the Gibson audit also reviewed a lot of our security measures and system that we have in place, and thus, they did come up with several recommendations to address those.
Okay, I guess I didn't see, I didn't see that or notice that in the, in the report that we received. In a message from Mr. Gibson, he, which Mr. Rice forwarded to me, said that they checked that you had a vendor in place, but he, I think that's all he said. So, I can look back and see if I can see those recommendations.
Mr. Talan did ask several of the questions with our staff, such as, do we have any audit, internal audits within our own system or external, addressing some of the vulnerabilities that we have? And we presented to them with the things that we have lined up in terms of projects, as well as a penetration test that we're about to conduct, and so on and so forth.
So, is that something that the Board would get a report on at some point?
I, once we have conducted and once we have the result, I will share it with the Board.
Okay, I think that, I would like.
And to be most useful, I do believe that a thorough security audit should be conducted possibly in 2019, 2020 school year, so that way, it will ensure that we look at everything that we have done so far to make sure that they are, address all of the vulnerabilities that we have.
So, the people that are looking at it now, are people on our staff, currently on Fort Bend ISD staff, or we have some consultants?
We have very, various resources, including Homeland Security, as well as external vendor that we engaged.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham, very much.
Mr. Burdine, just one last comment. Because the Texas Legislature has imposed a responsibility for internal audit upon the Board of Trustees, it is something that we take very seriously. And we have a very robust internal audit program underway, as Dr. Dupree and members of the administration can attest to. So, anyone in the community that wonders if we are keeping our eye on things, we are doing that, and we're continuing to do that every year. We're careful not to overwhelm the administration with too many audits and balance that with the amount of money that we have to spend, and because this year we're in kind of a tight spot, we have reduced our, our funding on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I appreciate that, and I did want to reiterate that we do have a very robust internal audit program, and I know that's a big part of our success. And I thank you for all your comments. Thank you for leading us, Mr. Rice, and thank you, Mr. Longfam. Are we good? Does anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Burdine, I would just point out that Mr. Rice has presented this as an information item, but we do plan to include for action on next week's meeting. We want to ask the Board to approve the audit plan. That's been the tradition of the committee.
Okay. That sounds great. So, you're gonna, we're gonna talk about putting that on the agenda, or that's gonna be on the agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. On to the next information item, Board Goal 1. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, the next item we have is our Educational Technology Plan update. This is an update on information we shared with the Board last year about piloting many new tools in our classrooms. This is an especially important item this evening because as we really begin our open discussions about the 2018 bond planning, this will inform planning for that bond. And the Board's going to get a more thorough update on the bond plan next week, but there's pieces of it, and this is a key component, that we wanted to update the Board on this evening in preparation for the bond discussion on the, on the 18. So, I'll turn it over, I guess, to Stephanie Williams.
I'll start.
Or Longfam, and it's going to work with JoJo and Stephanie. Long?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, Dr. Dupree, President Burdine, members of the school boards. Tonight, we will provide you an update with our Educational Technology Master Plan, as well as the Infrastructure Master Plan update. Without further ado, I would like to turn the presentation over to Stephanie Williams and JoJo Jacob to provide more details.
Good evening. The Educational Technology Plan represents a collaborative effort between the Academic Affairs Division and the Information Technology Division, along with campus administrators and teachers on our campuses, which piloted blended learning. At this time, I'd like to ask teachers and staff members who participated in the launch of Schoology and the Education Technology Master Plan, please stand and be recognized. Each of these leaders has contributed to achieving District Goal 3, which references an inclusive, collaborative, and fluid learning environment. Specifically, Goal 3, Objective 1 articulates innovative teaching strategies aligned to the integration of technology and blended learning. This slide shows the Educational Technology Plan timeline and progress over the past two years. We began with an audit with the Renaissance Institute. The Renaissance Institute defined recommendations around an educational technology implementation framework, which articulated instructional practices and the technology infrastructure that is needed to support, require, or the blended learning practices. In 2016-17, our technology team put the Wi-Fi infrastructure at 40% completion. In 17-18, we launched Schoology, our learning management system, and our new student-centered curriculum. This launch included a blended learning implementation at 16 pilot campuses, where we provided teachers on those campuses with the classroom technology toolkit, and we were able to move our Wi-Fi infrastructure to 97% completion. In 2018-19, we will expand upon this work via added curriculum supports, additional student programming, and blended learning classroom opportunities. Wi-Fi will be at 100% by the end of 2018-19. The next part of this presentation focuses on the planned 2018-19 implementation of curriculum supports, expansion, and our technology infrastructure. As part of the Phase 2 curriculum development, we prioritize the development of technology learning progressions. Each of our core curriculum has learning progressions aligned to readiness standards. On this slide, you see a technology learning progression related to communication and collaboration with the use of digital tools in grades K through 2. This progression articulates what it is that students need to know related to technology and the ways that they'll show their knowledge with technology. Additionally, within the K-8 core curriculum, we've integrated coding and robotics learning experiences throughout the core content areas. As with our core curriculum development process, once we have learning progressions in place, we detail success criteria so that our students and teachers can identify where they are in the learning process and where they're going. On this slide, you see that learning progression broken into success criteria for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, detailing how students will know they're successful with the technology integration standards, and also, the tools or apps digitally that they will use to show their learning or demonstrate understanding of core content. Once we have those curriculum supports in place, we need to focus on student programming and expanding our blended learning classrooms. This slide shows the planned expansion in 18-19. First, with course offerings in the elementary school. This year, we worked with two elementary schools for a proof-of-concept related to a STEM Outclass, and next year, we will launch that pilot at 10 elementaries across Fort Bend. Currently, we have 39 coding clubs at our 50 elementaries, and next year, we will expand to all 50 elementaries with our coding clubs. In middle school, we will offer Robotics 1 at 13 of our 14 middle schools, and expand Robotics 2 to the five middle schools who already offered Robotics 1. Then, we will offer Fundamentals of Computer Science to our middle school students at identified schools. Finally, we're currently ramping to a dual-credit coding, which will launch in 2020 for our high school students, so that they can have experiences with app development within our school before they leave us to college. And that will be a dual-credit option. In order to expand blended learning, this year, all of our campuses will engage in full implementation of Schoology, which includes parent access and the gradebook tool within Schoology. In order to support teachers, we developed the Equip to Empower Teacher Academy, where teachers went through an application process to show their readiness to implement blended learning. We're proud to say that we have admitted 170 teachers into the Equip to Empower Teacher Academy for 18-19. Those 170 teachers have committed to two days of training in the summer, will engage in an ongoing book study together as a PLC, and will meet digitally monthly to follow-up on their learning and to share their classroom experiences as they grow in the implementation of blended learning. Additionally, we have identified a coding equipment package for our K-8 schools, and those lessons related to providing all students in Fort Bend ISD access to coding learning experiences will be written into the core curriculum. As part of the blended learning pilot, this school year, we engaged our blended learning schools to evaluate the degree to which the identified devices met student needs. So, we had a classroom toolkit that we identified that we felt could assist teachers in utilizing blended learning and instruction. The pilot goal, the pilot met their goal, and what we have here on this slide is some of the data from working with those pilot campuses. So, throughout this school year, the Teaching and Learning Division engaged teachers and campus leaders on our blended campuses in surveys and focus groups to ensure that the classroom toolkit that we're recommending to you tonight would support their needs. The data that you see on the screen first, 72% of teachers reported that the number of devices is adequate to support the classroom instruction. The remaining 28% said a 1 to 10 ratio, 10 devices in each classroom, is not enough to support instruction. We prefer a 1 to 1. So, we held focus groups with each of those campus teachers and discussed with them, if a 1 to 1 model was not feasible, what model could better support you? And overwhelmingly, teachers recommended a 2 to 1 model, meaning one device per pair of students, and that's what you'll see evidenced in the recommendation tonight. The next thing that we asked teachers is, what is the capacity of the device? So, an iPad at grades K and 1 and a laptop or tab, or, yeah, a laptop at grades 2 through 12. How does that capacity, what that device can do, support instruction? And 88% of teachers voiced that that capacity is sufficient to meet the instructional and learning needs of students. We wanted to go a little deeper in the survey, and we wanted to find out from our teachers how well they thought they were doing with implementing blended learning. We're very happy to see that 95% of teachers in the blended learning pilot said they were somewhat confident with utilizing technology integration and blended learning, and 43% ranked themselves proficient or advanced in the use of blended learning after one year. That was data from December through March. Finally, as part of our survey and focus groups, we asked teachers, what are the greatest obstacles to you utilizing blended learning in your classroom? And the number one obstacle at 52% was lack of Wi-Fi access, which JoJo will speak to when he presents. And then, the second was the number of devices, which I addressed earlier, related to the teacher feedback. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to JoJo, and he will share with you the Classroom Technology Toolkit recommendation and information around the infrastructure.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Dr. Dupree, and the Board of Trustees, for your time this evening. Part of the recommendations from the Renaissance Institute Assessment, sorry, part of the recommendations from the Renaissance Institute Assessment in 2016, and the data gathered from the Bundling running pilot on the current school year, here's a look at the recommended classroom toolset, starting with the elementary school. Grades pre-K to first, it's 12 tablet, 12 tablet devices using, with a mobile card, that would be a touch device similar to an iPad. Grades 2 through 5 will be 12 laptops with a mobile card. That will be a two-in-one type of device where you have both touch and keyboard capability. In addition, a smart projector or TV with interactive capability. In addition, the recommendation is to equip all elementary campuses with 2 to 4 device cards available for teachers for checkout from the library. Teachers may use these devices to achieve 1 to 1 ratio for specific assignments and activities within the classroom. 1 to 2 centralized computer labs with a minimum of 30 devices each, and a lending library program where students without access to a device or internet can loan a device and a hotspot for short-term use at home. We are piloting such a program, the lending library program, in the 18-19 school year. For secondary classrooms, grades 6 through 12, it's 15 laptops with a mobile card available per classroom, along with a smart projector or TV with interactive capability. In addition, the recommendation is to equip all secondary campuses with 2 to 6 device cards available to teachers for checkout from the library. Minimum 2 centralized computer lab with minimum 30 devices, along with a lending library program, as explained previously. Here's a look at the Student Device Refresh Recommended Implementation Plan. In 2017-18 school year, we implemented the Bundling running pilot in 16 schools, where 10 devices were rolled out to each of the classrooms that participated in the pilot. Based on pilot survey feedback, as Mr. Williams indicated, we have since adjusted the number of devices to better meet the 2 to 1 student-to-device ratio, changing from 10 devices to 12 devices within the primary grades, and changing from 10 devices to 15 devices within the secondary grades. In 18-19 school year, we plan to further expand the Bundling running pilot through Equip to Empower Teacher Academy, as Ms. Williams explained. We anticipate approximately 170 classrooms to participate in this expansion. In the 19-20 school year, the recommendation is to deploy the classroom toolset to 50% of the classrooms throughout the district, if that is the bond is approved, to purchase the devices. The classrooms are to be selected based on the campus teacher engagement and readiness, working in collaboration with campus principals. A similar process to Equip to Empower Teacher Academy will be used for selection of the 50%. In 2020 and 2021, deploy the remaining 50% using the same strategy I stated. In addition, in order to expand BYOD, our Bring You Own Device, we're exploring the idea of offering a $100 voucher option to high school students towards the purchase of a pre-approved model of BYOD device they can bring to school. We are working closely with our legal and business and finance team to look at the viability of such a program. By encouraging students to participate in BYOD, we anticipate the need for district provider devices to reduce over time and the associated funding burden. Over time, we foresee BYOD closing the gap towards a 1 to 1 device ratio. As an alternative to the voucher program, we're also negotiating discount programs with manufacturers that we typically deal with to see if there's a discount program that could be put in place, so we can offer that to all district students within the And now, I'd like to pass the mic on to Mr. Longfam to go over the Infrastructure Technology Master Plan update, as well as future technology initiatives.
Thank you, JoJo. With the Technology Infrastructure Master Plan developed in 2014, addressed the state of technologies within the district based on a recommendation from the work of Information Technology, Technology Steering Committee, the campuses, Educational Partner Solutions, as well as GoIT. This, thank you, this revised technology infrastructure update identifies and provides the recommendation for remaining needs of the infrastructure. And this plan is developed with the intent to further enhance Fort Bend ISD technology infrastructure to support education, which include more than simply providing computers and software. So, I just want to briefly point out a few key infrastructure accomplishments that we did with the 2014 bond. Just a quick overview, the data centers, we have moved it from a Tier 1 to Tier 2, and with a lot of redundancy that provides us with availability so to keep the computation on at all times. Also, we converted 98% of all servers into virtual servers, thus consolidating a lot of our old physical servers, doing away with them. And then, we provide next-generation firewall so we can better protect our children based upon the requirement by CIPA Children Internet Protection Act. We also increased the internet circuit to 6 gigabit per second, so that way, we can handle most of every needs in the foreseeable future in terms of the internet access to resources. And finally, Office 365 Cloud provides us with a solution that our emails, both email server could do, stability, as well as scalability. Just quickly, we upgraded the bandwidth so that we can make sure that we have the bandwidth to provide for the data that's going to be demand on the backbone. We also replaced a lot of end-of-life, because when I stepped onboard five years ago, we were at the end-of-life for a lot of equipment. In other words, this manufacturer will not support them anymore. We also create, install a lot of cable, cabling infrastructure that increased the bandwidth. But finally, most importantly, we created a lot of wireless environment within our campuses, so that way, we are more flexible in terms of devices we provide. So, with that said, there are remaining needs that we need to complete. Infrastructure-wise, a lot of air conditioning resources are needed in our closets, so that way, we can cool down a lot of our equipment that we just installed. Access security management, data security, information security is the primary concentration we all know that we need. Network management tools are needed, as well as the telephone network that we need to replace the end-of-life supports. Data warehouse, we need a system to protect and distribute our student data, as well as our employee data. Enterprise resource planning system, our current PeopleSoft system is more than 10 years old, so we will need some type of, either an upgrade from PeopleSoft or a new system that take advantage of cloud computing, as well as solving a lot of our existing challenges. At the same time, we were hoping that to streamline a lot of HR and business and finance processes, procedures, to take advantage of these automation. We also have things in hardware, software, that needs addressed because of end-of-lives, such as fuel management system, as well as timekeeping clock. Of course, data center has to address a lot of growth that we are experiencing, especially with a security camera. And then, campus audio/video, we are looking at replacing a lot of outdated, broken audio-video systems at the campuses, like at the cafeteria, auditorium, cafeteria, et cetera, as well as addressing the needs at the stadium annex and various venues that our student use. Now, finally, as Stephanie and JoJo mentioned, the classroom toolset is what the primary needs is really concentrated, because the last time that we have any major upgrade to these devices were the bond 2010. So, a lot of our, our devices, student devices, are about 8 to 10 years old. Next steps, as Stephanie pointed out, professional development. The Equip to Empower Teacher Academy will continue to the summer required job embedded support. We will launch parent communication and training for the district-wide parent access, as well as teacher-gradebook. Wireless infrastructure, we completed our last campus. Now, we're working towards upgrading the wireless at various auxiliary buildings. We need to finalize the cost estimate, and I'll present to you at the next slide what the cost, that cost estimate is. And we, if approved, we will begin the HVAC project for the IT closet to address the needs. Funding is something that we would like to hopefully find a source of funding. This slide provides you with the cost, rough cost estimate of all of what we need in order to improve the remaining infrastructure. Hopefully, the possible funding source may be the upcoming proposed 2018 bond. This will complete the major infrastructure needs for the next four to six years. With that, this will conclude our presentation. We would like to address any question that the Board may have.
Thank you very much for such a thorough presentation. We appreciate it. Do we have any questions from Board members? Mr. Rosenthal?
So, I read the memo that you had sent to us, and it looks like more and more of our teachers are getting more comfortable with the LMS system and kind of moving, moving through it. And I did see that, that most of them, you know, obviously, you showed that here too, where the Wi-Fi seems to kind of, kind of be the stopping point. And so, obviously, you're talking about the 2018 bond, if that were to pass, but for next year's issues, what are your... year's issues, what are your plans to try to improve? I mean, do we have capabilities? Do we have funds? Are there funds in the budget that we just looked at that are dedicated to keeping the momentum going with, you know, Schoology?
Yes, sir. We work with Mr. Bassett's team to identify funds to support the next-year temporary expansion of the pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Verdean. I just have a couple of questions. I wanted to go back to the voucher program that you guys are potentially proposing, and I'd like to know what funding sources are we considering for that?
So, that cannot be funded through the bond, so it would be through some sort of internal general funds. And that's part of the reason that it's considered as an option that we're looking at, whether we'll be able to move forward on that is something we need to figure that out. At the same time, if we're able to come up with a discount program, working with the manufacturers, that amounts to be the same, then that would be the better path for us.
Given the current state of our budget, it's a little concerning to try to think that we could come up with a voucher program, not that, I don't want us to find a way to help our kids if we can. I like the discount programs if we can find something like that. Also, potentially grant money out there, maybe we can find a grant that can help some of our kids who might need a device. But I just, I didn't see anything about that in there, so I just wanted to ask that question. One of the things I wanted to, I guess, ask or point out, because I think I heard you say it, and it was a question I was going to have, when we're going through the remaining needs, which will potentially be part of a bond, we're looking at the data center growth and expansion for storage needs, and I know that we have some laws that were recently passed or passed last legislative session about cameras in special needs classrooms, and we also have our other security cameras. There are some storage requirements that are pretty costly. So, I do believe that the law was modified to reduce those storage costs. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And to address that, I do believe Chief Ryder has put that amount for storage in his proposed 2018 bond.
Okay, and that's for security?
Yes, ma'am, strictly for security cameras.
But you're asking for the storage, you're addressing the storage needs for the special needs.
The district, that's correct.
Okay.
Because currently, we have about five hundred and twelve terabytes of storage, and as we move more and more to a digitally all-inclusive environment, then more demand on the storage will be required.
So, and one of the reasons I bring that up is because I think people don't understand how expensive it is to store the video. These days, we're storing video, you know, on our phones, and so, give us an idea of how much we're having to store and what that's costing us. If you don't have those numbers with you, that's okay.
We can get back with you on the numbers that we have seen and compare that to the amount that we have spent.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. I appreciate your comments. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Verdean. So, just to piggyback on what Mrs. Tosan was saying, so in your estimated cost list, part of that is data storage or not? That's part one. And then, part two is, are we considering cloud-based storage? Because it seems that might be somewhat, could be, it could be more flexible.
Yes, ma'am. So, to answer your first question is, this includes only the storage for the district use in terms of our daily file servers and so on and so forth. The security, as I mentioned, was included in the security proposal. No, ma'am. That's a separate.
Not the security, but our daily use.
Yes, ma'am.
Our emails and documents and things like that. That's included in.
That's correct. And to answer your second question, yes, we did consider, as a matter of fact, cloud storage was our first choice of, because it's required less infrastructure. However, with the impact on our budget, cloud storage has to come out of the general fund, so we cannot put forth the proposal that would impact tremendously on the general fund.
Okay, so that's a really good point, so thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Pham. So, this is a point that we need to carry to the state legislature this session, because they are forcing us, they are forcing us essentially by not properly funding public education, to finance in the public debt, long, over a long period of time, expenses that could, and possibly if somebody say even should, go in an operating budget. So, I think we should quantify that to a certain, and I'm not saying this in this, but as we get closer to the legislative session, these are the types of things and statistics and data that we need to be able to have handy to be able to talk to our state legislators about, because it's, the financial crisis for schools is going to be significant, and if we continue to bump these things into, if we have to continue to bump these things into our debt, which is meant for long-term capital improvements, not short-term purchases. Computers and such, they don't, iPads, whatever these devices are, they don't last thirty years. So, if we're financing it over thirty years, that's, I mean, that's difficult for us, and it's not sustainable. So, this is another example of an unsustainable financial structure that our state is pushing us towards.
Most ideal way to address the ever-changing technology is to lease computers, so that way every four to five years, we could provide a student with the latest technology, but leasing come from operating budget instead of capital dollars.
Exactly. So, that's, this is an example of something we need to understand. We've come up with a couple of suggestions that would allow us to be more nimble in our operations, but we're restrained from doing that because we don't have a funding source. And we're, as Mr. Bassett's team presented tonight, ninety percent salaries and benefits, it leaves nothing for us to run our business with.
And I'm hoping that my vision, if it comes true, then the, as our BYOD Bring Your Own Device environment matures, then it will become less reliance on the district-provided devices. And I foresee eventually, we can ask, as part of the list of things that the kids need bring first day of school, will be a device of some type, and that would not be a burden on the family.
Thank you very much, Mrs. James, and thank you very much, Mr. Long-Fam. Does anyone else have any questions? So, I had a real quick question here. Are we good? Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. So, Mr. Pham here, as we're currently going to build some new schools here in the near future, how could we get ahead of the curve, so to speak, so we're not playing catch-up? I mean, is there any tools available to us so that we're not going back and running wires through our schools, or just making any major changes in the near future?
Right now, we are providing with, every new school with the latest design in terms of wireless access. Wireless will require running wires, however, it is less than the amount of wires that we need if we to provide desktop devices. So, in other words, every new school will have the wireless environment that we need, as well as the devices that the kids need when we propose this.
So, those are easy updates, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? We're good. Okay. It is now time to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, under the following sections, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. In the spirit of time, if we could get back in a closed session here shortly, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.